We're going to call the meeting to order and pledge to flag. Is Robert Blum here? I don't see him. Okay, we'll do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Karpel.
Mr. Tosti.
Here.
Mr. Kezak.
Here.
Ms. Strauss.
Here.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
We also have Township Manager, Mrs. Thule Coles, Township Solicitor, Mr. Esposito, and Township Engineer, Mr. Kessler, in attendance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Karpel. A couple announcements. Our next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Monday, July 12, 2021, at 7:00 P.M. Next on the announcements is the Middletown Community Foundation Scholarship Presentation. Ms. Kearns.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paula Kearns. I'm the founder and executive director of the Middletown Community Foundation. We've been around since the year 2000, and in 2002, we decided to start a scholarship program to award students who participate in community service throughout their high school careers. This year, we had a great group of applicants, and we decided to give scholarships to the four of them because their essays were fabulous. And that's how you win the scholarship. It's not grade-based. It's just an essay that you write about the community service that you've performed during your high school career. Since 2002, we've awarded 176 scholarships totaling $180,000. So it's been great. All of our winners this year are from Nishamani High School, and I would like to introduce you to them. They're all here, and I would like to call up Katie Cianco, who is the recipient of the Becky Morseglia Award. And Katie Morseglia, are you here? Yeah. Oh. Here you go. So Katie's representing her family. Our next winner is John Michael Murray, or I'm sorry, Michael John Murray, who is the winner of the Richard L. Tosti Award, and presenting that award will be Supervisor Chairman Tom Tosti.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Can we get a picture?
I'll take it. I neglected to mention that Katie, or Casey, I'm sorry, Casey is going to Quittstown, and Michael is going to Cedarville or Penn State, which one?
Cedar.
Cedarville, and he's going to study nursing. Our next winner is Samir Ravel, and he is also a student at Nishamani. He's going to Temple University. He is winning a scholarship that was named after former Township Manager John Burke. John was longtime manager of Middletown Township, and ironically, he went to Temple, and that's where Samir is going. And our fourth winner is Ryan Shoenman. Ryan is going to Penn State, yay, and he's going to major in business. Congratulations. We thank all of our scholarship winners, and let's give another round of applause. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, we'd like to congratulate all the recipients, and we'd also like to thank our Middletown Community Foundation for the work that they do, not only for our community, but for our staff here with the dogs. And everything you do is just great work, and we really appreciate everything you do. Next on the agenda is a commendation for Robert Blum, who got his Eagle Scout, but I'm not sure if Robert made the meeting. So we will move on to Letter D, and it's a retirement recognition for Bernadette Frisch. She is retiring. I will turn the mic over to you, Ms. Thule Coles.
I think if it would be okay with you, Chairperson Tosti, if we could invite the representatives from Senator Tomlinson's office, from Representative Davis's office, and also Congressman Fitzpatrick. So you guys want to go first?
Wow, this really stuck. Hello, my name is Kyle. I'm here on behalf of Congressman Brian Fitzpatrick. Unfortunately, the congressman's unable to attend today as he's in DC for a legislative session, but I would like to thank the supervisors for inviting us here today and allowing me to speak on his behalf. But most of all, the person that we want to thank is Bernie for almost, well, just shy of 30 years of public service. So in honor of nearly three decades of public service, the congressman had this flag flown over the United States Capitol. And now I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thank you, Kyle. Well, hello, Bernie. My name is Nick. I'm from Senator Tomlinson's office. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here this evening. He is in Harrisburg for a legislative session. He did have a Senate Citation prepared in the Senate Chamber for your 30 years of service to Middletown Township. So thank you, and on behalf of Senator Tomlinson, congratulations and happy retirement.
Hi, I'm Dawn. I'm playing double duty today. I work in Representative Tina Davis's office, and on behalf of Representative Tina Davis and Representative Frank Ferry, we have a citation from the House of Representatives for your service to Middletown Township. On a personal note, I thank you for everything that you've done for the township, and we're really going to miss you. Thank you.
Okay, and real quick, I will end things off. I want to come up here and turn around so everyone can see you, Bernie. So Bernie has been with Middletown Township, as you've heard, just shy of 30 years. Bernie is the, you know, behind-the-scenes, the brains behind the Township Manager's office. She keeps everything humming. She keeps the board well-prepared, well-communicated with. And most importantly, Bernie has really just been a part of our family here at the Middletown Township Building, and we are going to miss her tremendously. And a small gift as a thank you to you. For those of you who don't know, Bernie is an amazing cook. She prays for you. She prepares food for you. She takes care of everyone in the Township Building. Most importantly, the plants are going to just go. We don't know what's going to happen to the plants after Bernie leaves, but Bernie and her husband Ron have a great retirement ahead of them. They've already sort of started to retire over the last couple of months. So we wish you happy trails and great trips ahead, and we, of course, will miss you and hope to see you when you pop back in. And thank you for all the great work. 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, Nick, and Dawn. And Bernie, I would like to thank you too. Since I've been on the board, you've welcomed me. Anytime I had a problem, you always handled my problem. You've just been wonderful to me and to this board, so I would like to thank you and wish you the best. 30 years, I won't keep saying it because I see you rolling your eyes, but I did have to say it one last time. But good luck, and I'm sure you're going to enjoy retirement. I don't know anybody that hasn't enjoyed it yet, so I'm sure you're going to enjoy it. And next on the agenda is the Police Department Commendations. Chief Bartarella.
Mr. Tosti, fellow board members, real fast, I also want to say congratulations to Bernie. These seven years. The Manager's Office, the State Department, Bernie. Great conversation. Seven years, really, seven months, as we know. But Brian Bernie, we've said a lot of people, and you guys, congratulations. Congratulations.
See you more each other three days, so, three days, right? All right, with that being said, we have some awards to give out for the Police Department. So I first want to present two squad citations. They're both going to go to Sergeant Mike Russo. Mike's in charge of our C Squad, which is one of our two night patrol squads. Mike is a good, strong leader. In fact, all the commendations we're going to give tonight, the two squad citations and the two commendatory citations, all these officers work for Mike, and Mike does a fantastic job running his squad, so it's no surprise that these assignments and these peaceful resolutions and these arrests occurred while Mike and his squad were working. So the first is presented to Sergeant Mike Russo, and the following officers, Glenn McPherson, Nelson Webb, Brian Agostino, Ryan Mars, and Adam Bailey, Alexa Moore's. We did it as a very nice squad citation. That's for their actions taken on January 4, 2021, in the successful and peaceful apprehension of a burglary suspect who had broken into several houses in the township. Squad did a great job corralling the burglar and taking him into custody without further incident. So great job, Mike, by you and your squad. And then squad citation number two is also presented to Sergeant Mike Russo, and officers Mark Leenhouser, Mike Marks, Kevin Platinecki, and Matthew Ballant, for your actions taken on March 6, 2021, in successfully and peacefully de-escalating and resolving a shots-fired suicidal subject incident with no injuries to police or to the suicidal person. And also want to add that the suicidal subject was taken for a mental health evaluation, so that person hopefully received the help that they need. But that was, again, a great job of de-escalating and making a peaceful resolution of something that could have easily escalated and been very serious. So great job, Sergeant Russo, by you and your squad. Get a squad citation for that as well. Now I'm going to call up Officer Adam Bailey. Adam, in recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended for the following actions. On December 11, 2020, 10:56 P.M., you were dispatched to the Macy's Parking Lot at the Oxford Valley Mall for the report of a distraught 18-year-old who was threatening to kill himself. You quickly arrived on scene along with other officers. You began speaking to the distraught young man. After several minutes, you were able to take protective custody of him without injury or incident. You then transported him to Lower Bucks Hospital for a psychological evaluation and medical treatment. Recovered from his vehicle was an airsoft pistol, airsoft rifle, and two knives. Your ability to show empathy and compassion through your dialogue with this young man was instrumental in getting him to surrender to you safely and to get him the help that he needed. Your actions reflect credit upon the entire Middletown Township Police Department and are in keeping with the best police practices and highest standards of law enforcement. Great job, Adam. Congratulations. And last but not least, we have Officer Mary Alice Felton and K-9 Fitz. Mary and Fitz, in recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended for the following actions. On May 11, 2021, at 1:00 a.m., while working your patrol shift, you and your partner K-9 Fitz were called to assist the Pennsylvania State Police with a traffic stop on I-95 and Ben Salem. Trooper conducting the traffic stop had developed reasonable suspicion that narcotics were located within the vehicle that he had stopped. You and Fitz proceeded to the stop, and Fitz conducted a free-air sniff of the vehicle. K-9 Fitz gave a positive alert to the vehicle indicating the presence of narcotics. The vehicle was seized, entered into evidence by the state police. Subsequent search warrant by the state police found 120 grams of methamphetamine, small amount of marijuana, THC wax, bulk packaging materials, three scales, and other drug paraphernalia. As a result of the search, an arrest warrant for possession of uncontrolled substance with intent to distribute and other related offenses was obtained against the operator of the vehicle. Your actions reflect credit upon the entire Middletown Township Police Department and are in keeping with the best police practices, highest standards of law enforcement. While the Middletown Community Foundation is here, I did send them an email about this job as soon as it happened, just to let them know they've been so instrumental. They've gotten us our last four dogs, and K-9 Fitz has had a couple of really good narcotic seizures since he's been on the street doing patrol. You can tell he's a little spunky, likes to work. So this is a great job by Mary and K-9 Fitz, so good job, Mary. Congratulations. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, officers, for everything you do to keep our streets safe. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items only. If you're going to make a public comment on a non-agenda item, just come to the microphone, state your name and your address, and we'll also see if there are any in the queue.
Andy Warren, Shady Brook Drive. Congratulations to the award winners tonight and to the officers and all the scholars. Great for Middletown, and it's a very nice thing, that scholarship program. Congratulations, and anybody who can stay in government for 30 years, I commend wholeheartedly. I'm trying. I just have a real quick question to confirm in my mind. Is the population of Middletown roughly 45, 48,000 people? Is that close?
That's like 42, 43.
42, okay, that, all right. And we have boards, authorities, that those 42,000 can be appointed to? Roughly a dozen, two dozen?
I don't know, roughly, maybe about eight or nine.
Okay, all right. Thank you, and the only qualification basically is that you're a Middletown resident.
Correct.
That's the way I understood it. Now, I do have two items for the agenda, but do I wait till they come up, or?
Yeah, when they get brought up, then you can have a comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Are any of those dozen boards or authorities compensated? Is there any?
The zoning board is compensated.
That's the only one?
Planning is offered it, but I believe they all refused the compensation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Steve Hines, 323 North Elmwood from Langhorne. We live in one of the only remaining undedicated streets in Middletown Township. For the past 31 years, I've lived on that street and have lost count of how many times I've bought stone, rented a batko, repaired the street. We now have five residents on our street. The township, I guess, has approved building two more houses on the street. Nothing has been done to, I know we went through this before about 15 years ago, and there was a plot on the street that was owned by somebody. Nobody knew. It was six by six. It was in the middle of the road. They have since, the township has taken that property over. I looked it up on the Township Planning, and the township now owns that piece of property, so there's no longer any obstruction to having the street paved. So I'd just like to get on the agenda to see what we can do about getting the street paved. I have pictures. It is at times unpassable. We have two-foot ruts. Because they built house on the top of the hill, halfway up the hill, all that runoff now comes down because the land is now cleared with used-to-be woods. It's no longer woods. It's all houses. So we're in the middle of the street. If you know Perry Winkle Avenue, which runs, is the flood zone that runs right along Nishamani Creek, we're halfway up the hill from that, so everything just runs down the hill, and it turns into a river. They had made concessions for runoff. There was some sewers put in, but then they put dirt over it and never completed anything. There's a fire hydrant on our street. Unfortunately, two people died about five years ago on the street in a fire. They had problems with the fire hydrant because they couldn't get water to it. You know, it's a safety hazard, and it's, you know, we're a regular neighborhood. We're in Middletown Township. We're not in, you know, the Poconos. We're still living on a stone street, five people. New house just put up, 5,000-square-foot house just put across the street from me. You know, it's time. I don't think there's three undedicated streets left in the township.
There's more than three.
Is there?
Yeah, I mean, if you go down Brownsville there, a couple of them going down on the right-hand side, well, up towards Simmons Park, there are paper streets. We call them paper streets. We have them in Langhorne Gables. We have some paper streets. So there's more than three within the township. We even have one over off of Zimmerman Lane. So they're out there in the township. This is something that I guess we would have to discuss with our Public Works Department, the city, and maybe discuss it with our solicitor, but it's not something we could commit to tonight, but.
I understand. I'd just like to get it on the agenda for future.
But there's definitely more than three paper streets within our township.
Of those three paper streets, do any of them get two-foot ruts down the middle of them and are unpassable?
Can you repeat?
They are unpassable at times, or, you know, we're in the middle of the hill, so the water coming down the hill, and the township's approved the building and the clearing of the land, but has never done anything about runoff. We're 200 yards from a flood zone.
Yeah, I know they were out there right along there doing something with the inlet. Like last summer, they rebuilt that inlet, and I'm not sure if they redid pipe in there or not, but let us talk to our Public Works Department and our solicitor about that.
And how do I follow up with that?
You can follow up at the next meeting if you want. All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Hi, my name is Joyce Martindale. I live at 738 West Maple Avenue, Langhorne.
My name is Donna Lorenz, 716 West Maple Avenue, Langhorne.
We have a problem with golf balls. Lots of golf balls.
One weekend.
Flying over. Now, they put up the new netting across the street. It's the 12th hole, if anyone's familiar. But the land goes downhill, and the fencing goes downhill with it, and the golf balls are coming over the top. We've been in touch with Maureen.
I've been talking to Maureen at the golf course, and she's been very helpful. She did get the new netting put up that was down, but they're still coming over. I mean, they're hitting my house at a 90-degree angle.
And they're flying over my house into my backyard now. It's, I don't know what's going on.
I cut grass, and it's so dangerous when I'm out there. Like, my son actually was walking to his car, turned around, and caught one in his hand where it almost hit him in the head in the driveway.
Yeah, because I know they put the netting up a few years back, and then.
But it follows the ground.
They did. It goes down with the ground where, instead of keeping the net even, they followed the ground.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be down at the ground. It has to be higher at the top.
Okay.
And we didn't know if there was anything that.
Let us be in touch with the golf course. Let's see if we can handle it that way and see if we can't get them to do something.
She told me that was everything she could do. She said it was time to come here.
Okay, we'll talk to them.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Gillian Aronson. Hi, I'm Gillian Aronson. I'm just, I'm with Mr. Hines here. I live on the same street.
Can you just get closer to the mic?
Oh, yep, sorry. My name's Gillian Aronson. I'm with Mr. Hines from the same street. I'm with Styria Ave on the lower, but my driveway's on Elmwood as well, and I just wanted to reiterate that the road, it gets so bad sometimes that cars can't drive up. I drive a Mazda, but am I supposed to really buy a four-wheel-drive car just to drive up my road? And more houses are being approved. With the construction as well is also messing up the road, all the big machinery coming up, and it's just, it's just a mess. So I just wanted to reiterate and just put my word. I also have a letter from another neighbor who couldn't attend. If I could give it to somebody on our behalf.
If you wanted to just give it to our manager there?
If we were able to set up another, another meeting, I know that we could get all the houses on the street to say that it's an issue for everybody, not just one house or two houses. It's an issue for everybody, so.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sheldon Post, Red Rose Gate. I have actually a few different comments I want to make this evening along with several questions along the way. I'd like to begin with the actual TV broadcasts of these meetings. I know that, I believe in the last, either the last meeting or the one before, there was something on the agenda about obtaining new equipment to help improve upon, I guess, the broadcast of the meetings themselves. I'm hoping that that alone may eliminate some of these issues, but it seems like every single broadcast, I usually don't watch them live. Usually I watch rebroadcasts, but it seems like every single one, there's either instances where the sound is completely garbled, and you can't understand a word anyone is saying, or there's no sound at all for brief periods, or it sounds like you are in an echo chamber where a comment is made by one of you, and then three seconds later, it comes across louder by the same person, kind of like listening to Yellow Submarine from the Beatles where they kind of go back and forth with that kind of thing. There's also been instances where there's been like a ridiculous amount of static involved where you don't get any sound, and I'm on, talking about Comcast, Channel 22. I don't know if it's a Comcast issue or if it's an equipment issue for us, so.
That's what I was wondering, if it was a Comcast issue.
Well, my hope is that if it's equipment, that that will be taken care of when we get the new equipment that I know that we're working on. I also wondered, is there, is there someone here that monitors these meetings as they're going on where they can kind of whisper in your ears or something that people can't hear you or that the sound isn't going out or that there's these issues? Is there such a person that does that?
He's behind that room back there. And then if there, if he can't hear us or if there's an issue, he'll pop his head out and either tell us to turn the mic on or get closer or do something like that, but he's right back there.
Okay, I know there have been times where I literally will watch for like 10, 15 straight minutes, and it's one of these issues that I've mentioned.
I know there was a couple meetings, and like, it was like two or three meetings ago, that we even had issues hearing, but it had a lot to do with the face mask when people got up and talked with the face mask on that we couldn't hear or we couldn't understand. And I don't know if that had something to do with the reception that you were getting back then, but I know there was a couple meetings that we had problems hearing things, but it had to do with the face mask, not the sound.
Well, and I understand that the whole Zoom issue probably creates its own little extra things.
We, though, have known that there are audio issues in this room and over the cable broadcast for a while, and we're hoping the new equipment fixes a lot of this, but we appreciate if folks would keep letting us know if there are continued issues because we want people to be able to hear what's going on.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's nerve-wracking to be sitting there hoping to see and understand and watch, but you can't. And I keep thinking, why doesn't somebody fix that while it's going on? But I understand, you know, it's being worked on, and hopefully, the new equipment will take care of that. My next couple comments revolve around when you guys take votes on major construction projects within the township. I'm wondering, in particular, the first one is the current indoor self-storage project that's going up on Woodburn Road. When we approve any of these kinds of things, the, you know, the building that's going to take place at the mall or something that might involve tearing up a parking lot somewhere and building, are the companies that do the construction, are they held responsible for restoring things back to their original form? In particular, I'm thinking at this point of two trenches that were dug across Woodburn Road, an otherwise relatively smooth road. road in the township. Two trenches dug all the way across, I assume, to hook up with sewer or water or something for the storage place. And already, even though it's been backfilled and patched, it's already sinking. And I don't think it'll take much time, more time, before, you know, you're going, driving along, and you've got these two basically ditches that you got to drive across, not to mention what might happen once we get a couple of freezes and thaws in the winter and things like that. So the question is, are those companies that we give approval to build and whatnot, are they responsible for making sure things like that are back to the way they were when they started?
Yes. Yes. They give an escrow when they apply for the permits, and when they restore it back to the way it should be, then it comes back in front of us and we approve giving the escrow back.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. The other project I want to comment on, now I'm assuming that this is true, but I read it on Facebook. You can never be so sure about Facebook. But it's my understanding that there is a request from Chick-fil-A to build a new standalone Chick-fil-A, basically in front of Bob's Discount Furniture in that parking lot. And if that's the case, as a little bit of a preemptive strike, I want to make a comment about traffic. I don't know if all of you are aware of the number of cars that exist every day at the current Chick-fil-A over by Sesame Place, but it's pretty unbelievable how many vehicles are lined up there in two and three rows running across the parking lot. And this is all while Sesame Place isn't even open. Now that they are open, it probably is going to be worse because you're going to have all those people wanting to go there, too. My concern is that if a new, and I'm a Chick-fil-A fan, so don't get me wrong on this, but my concern is that if a new one is built in that particular parking lot in front of Bob's, most of the people I would think that are currently in line over by Sesame Place are going to change gears and come over to this one because there's going to be increased people at Sesame Place now that it's open. My hope is that if this is going to come before you in the near future, which is my understanding, that you're all aware of that. I know their experts will tell us there's no, not going to be any traffic impact. They always tell us that. I've never heard an expert yet say it's going to be disastrous for traffic. But I have to think that there's going to be some major issues there. And it concerns me a little bit that maybe you're not all aware of the number of vehicles at the other one, because there are some things that have occurred fairly recent times where I've been told by some of you that you weren't aware of certain things. As an example, two examples, one of them being the nice large MT billboard that went up that Route 1 in Oxford Valley Road. I made some comments on that shortly after it went live, and there were two board members, one no longer seated on the board, but there were two board members that expressed surprise at how big it was themselves. So it's kind of concerning that they wouldn't have known that prior to approving that. Another instance that came up, I believe, at the last board meeting here, there was some public comment about the project to be done at Oxford Valley Mall. And a comment was made about how all of the parking lots at Oxford Valley Mall are now becoming tractor-trailer parking lots. And there was a board member who wasn't aware of that fact, that didn't realize that all these tractor-trailers were being parked there in that parking lot. So my concern is that if we kind of miss these little things, and then we have somebody like Chick-fil-A coming in and will tell us that traffic won't be an issue, that it's something that will go by unnoticed. So I'm hoping that you're all aware of what I'm talking about over by Sesame Place and that that'll be considered if and when this comes before you for approval by them. This isn't as bad as it looks. It's large print. Okay, the final thing I wanted to mention is actually on the agenda tonight, so I'll wait for that to come up. It involves the township signage, but I'll wait for that to occur. So thank you and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Letter A, consideration of authorizing payment of June 14, 2021 bill list in the amount of $2,838,461.58. Letter B, consideration of approving the May 3, 2021 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Letter C, consideration of approving the escrow release number one in the amount of $2,135.50 to Rich Beaumont for 1222 West Lincoln Highway land development. Letter D, consideration of approving final escrow release in the amount of $7,103.60 for the Newtown Friends land development. Letter E, consideration of approving final escrow release in the amount of $11,615.73 for Lakeview Estates. Letter F, consideration of acting, enacting resolution number 21-18R Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement, TE 160 for the New Falls Road sidewalk project. Letter G, consideration of authorizing a change order to the 2021 Road Improvement Program in the amount of $62,424 for the Stires Market parking lot. Letter H, consideration of authorizing the closing of the emergency declaration for COVID-19. Letter I, consideration of approving resolution number 21-19R recognizing June as Pride Month in Middletown Township. Letter J, consideration of approving resolution number 21-20R recognizing Juneteenth as a township holiday. Letter K, consideration of acting resolution 21-21R authorizing submission of a grant to the Office of the State Fire Commission. And Letter L, consideration of authorizing approval payment number four for the Langhorn Gables drainage improvement project in the amount of $74,249.70. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda items?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Seeing a motion and a second, any board questions? Any public questions? Mr. Warren?
Two quick questions on item G. What was, and I'm not asking for the exact to the penny, roughly, what was the original cost of the bid for that project? It's a $62,000 change order. Was it $6,600,000, roughly, anything like that?
I don't have that number on me. I can look for it. That was, it was just added to the road program is what this was.
You're asking the original contract amount?
Yes.
I do have that number. The original contract amount for this year's road program was $1,586,716. So this is the added area for the Stires Market paving. So that adds the 62,424.70 to that.
So it's $62,000 on a million-dollar contract.
Correct. Yeah, it makes the revised contract amount $1,649,140.70.
And that is a public parking lot, I assume? I mean, it, the.
It's owned by the township.
Is it a pub, pardon me?
It's township property.
It is owned by the township.
Okay.
And the total amount comes in at budget.
Yeah, that's correct.
See, we were under budget on our road program with our handicap sidewalks and everything, and we were able to get that in under budget.
Gentlemen with the two-foot ruts ought to talk to you if they're under budget. And the other, the other question was item J, is that in addition to a holiday or instead of a holiday?
It's in addition to. We're following what the state legislators did last year with the one resolution that they did.
Do we have a rough, again, I'm not playing word games, rough, what was the pay that'll come to that? I mean, obviously, employees are going to get paid for the day off. Emergency employees will get time and a half or double time or whatever they get. There must be some dollar amount attached to that.
I can certainly get that for you, but I do not have that off the top of my head.
Okay, so we don't know what our, and I'm not quibbling.
No.
The daily payroll is X. That's what this would be then, right?
We'll get you that.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the consent agenda items? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Number five, consideration of preliminary and final land development for proposed independent living apartment buildings, Penswood Village, 1382 Langhorn Newtown Road, Newtown, PA, 18940, RC Retirement Community Zoning, S/LD 21-02.
Good evening. I'm Ed Murphy. I'm here tonight on behalf of Penswood Village. I have with me Dan Murray, the CEO, and Tom Atkins, the CFO of the village. Also have Mark Havers from Pickering Courts in Somersen, our engineer. I think the board very well familiar with Penswood and what is out there today on their 82-acre campus next to George School and the Friends School. What's proposed tonight is to build two new freestanding three-story buildings that would house, in each building, 15 independent living units that would increase the total unit count of independent living units on the site from 300 plus or minus to 330. In addition, we would be reconfiguring certain other space and adding a total of six new personal care facilities or personal care units. So that's it. There are some renovations proposed to the skilled care area, but that is not going to increase the capacity beyond our presently allocable state permits that we have for the skilled care units. So we've gone through the traditional review by your boards and commissions and consultants of our plans. Most recently, they were recommended for approval by your planning commission, and we're here tonight to seek preliminary's final land development plan approval, subject to our ongoing compliance with those review comments. There was one comment that we devoted some amount of time to at the planning commission, and that dealt with the recommendation that we provide an interconnecting sidewalk from the bus stop at the 413 entrance to our facility that would cross over the Friends School to reach a point of interconnection with our internal sidewalk. As you probably know or may know, the Friends School real estate is owned by George School, not by Friends School. So since the planning commission meeting, we've reached out to both Friends School and George School to talk about providing that interconnection so that no one would, in theory, have to walk in the driveway to get to the point of the interconnecting sidewalk on the Penswood Village property. Because it's the end of the school year, we haven't had a chance beyond reaching out that we both, both schools said, yeah, we'd be happy to sit down and talk to you about it, but give us a chance to close up for the school year and then we'll sit down. We're committed to doing that, whatever configuration that takes. We will certainly provide that type of interconnection so that nobody would, in theory, have to walk. Right now, of all the employees at the village, two people use the bus. We pick them up and bring them back to the bus stop. So nobody, and all season, all weather, we do it. So nobody really walks, but nobody knows in the future what may happen. So we're going to provide that interconnection across the George School property, which is the Friends School area. So we will make that work, just so you know that we've reached out and are going to do that. So I think, I don't think there's any other comments, but if there are, we're happy to address them. Dan and Tom and Mark and I can certainly do that.
Is there any questions for Mr. Murphy?
I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy. So you talked about the proposed sidewalk extension to the bus stop. And then you said, but we're dropping off and picking up the passengers. So you're not going to do the sidewalk extension or you're contemplating that?
No, we still will.
Okay.
We still do it, even though practically speaking, nobody walks in the driveway to get to our interconnecting sidewalk because we pick them up. But you don't know what's going to happen in the future, so we are going to provide that sidewalk.
Okay, great. Yeah, I like the idea of contemplating future pedestrian traffic, whatever that may be. Okay, great.
Right. And that was Isaac's comment in his review letter. Right.
Any other questions? I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion, oh, I'm not on. I'll make a motion to grant preliminary final land development plan approval for Penswood Village, 1382 Langhorn Newtown Road, SLD number 21-02 with the following conditions. One applicant should comply in full with all requirements of Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. Number two, any remaining review comments shall be addressed in full. Three, the applicant shall investigate the opportunity to improve the pedestrian pathway connections for multimodal transportation.
Right. And I think there was one waiver that we brought up late in the process that should be included in that recommendation.
There was, yeah. The one waiver request we had noted that you guys had on the plans was the cul-de-sac bulb that's near the new building.
Right. We're still working that out with the fire marshal, but to what extent? We need a waiver. We may, but in the event we have to comply, we'll comply. But the fire marshal participated in the planning commission discussion and thought we were making good headway in solving that issue. It's a 10-foot radius issue that we may need, we may not. So just wanted to cover that now so that we don't have to come back from that.
So how do you want us to phrase that, Mr. Kessler?
Well, we did note that the waiver that may be requested for having it less than 40 feet, it was close to the 40. It's like 37 or so.
Right.
We would lean on the fire marshal's guidance on that for acceptable emergency access, so.
And we are agreed to respect whatever decision the fire marshal ultimately makes. If he supports our redesign so that it's not exactly 40 feet, it may be a little less, then that would be fine. If the fire marshal says, I want it to be 40, we'll be 40.
And Mr. Strauss, I believe the second item there, any remaining review comments to be addressed in full. The fire marshal's letter is part of that review comment packet.
So it's already in the motion?
Correct.
I'll second the motion then. Is there any board questions from, any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is consideration of amending the preliminary and final land development for Propco Pingood, Pinegood, Middletown LLC, proposed Wawa, 639 East Lincoln Highway, Langhorn, PA, 19047, C Commercial Zoning District, S/LD number 18-12. Mr. Murphy?
Yep, here again, as I was last year, to talk about the Wawa new location across from the Team Toyota facility on Lincoln Highway. Board will recall that when you approved it before, we were great. Plans got approved, we got all our permits, and we're actively under construction now. Then, that was pre-COVID. In response to the pandemic, Wawa introduced the concept of a drive-through, which they had historically never had. So what's in front of you tonight is an effort being made by Wawa to hop in before the construction gets completed so they don't have to retrofit the facility by offering the drive-through option to customers. So the only thing in front of the board is consideration of what changes to the plan were occasioned by the introduction of the drive-through. Much like with the prior application, the plans have gone through the normal process. We've met with your zoning hearing board, we met with your planning commission, and now you. Tonight, planning commission has recommended approval of the revision, again, subject to our ongoing compliance with the review comments, and all of that is acceptable to us. So in fact, it's a little bit less impervious because we've created some additional green spaces on the site, as odd as that sounds. But generally, everybody's been very supportive and recognizes that with COVID restrictions, many more people are using or taking advantage of the opportunity for drive-through service. So that's all it is. Hopefully, everybody would think it's a minor change, and I think we're good.
I, you want, because I have a question. I have a question about, I see on there where it says pickup. So it'll be on the side of the building. Now, the cars will pull out up to the stop sign, and I think you changed this with the, with the trees along the line there to the right of the word stop. So people will park to the right there, and they will walk across there where it says stop. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then do they go into the parking lot there? Or where is it that they go when? Or where is it that they go when they go across there? Because you have the lines that are going sideways there. Is that a parking spot that'll just be empty, or is that a, is that a sidewalk there?
Good evening, my name is Mike Riddell, I'm a project engineer with Wawa.
Okay.
I'm not exactly sure, I'm going to walk up and just verify.
So, where the stop is when they're coming out of the drive-through? Yes, they're going to walk across, and that, when you go right there, that area, right, no, to the left, going to the left, going to the left, for, right there. Is that, now, you're, yeah, that area there. Now, will they be walking on, what is that area there? Is that another parking spot? Or is that a concrete, with the lines?
Yeah, that's a hatched-out area for that purpose.
But will that be concrete there, where they step up on there, and then there will be no cars that could park there?
That's correct. We could, we could provide a sign, it's not, it's hatched out, so it's not, normally, a person wouldn't think that they could park there, but if you'd like to see a sign specifically saying "no parking," that might make sense.
So, you're saying that's not going to be concrete? That'll be blacktop with just lines through there?
It'll be concrete, but it will be hatched out, there'll be lines on the concrete.
So, it won't be a step, it'll be just...
It's all flush. All the concrete around the building is flush? All the yellow that you see is concrete?
Concrete, okay.
Correct. And there's no curb around the building, so everything is flush to the first floor, the finished floor.
My concern with the drive-through is when they cross over there, the vehicle's coming out that way, they have to exit that way, and it looks like you're giving them enough room with that buffer that you got with the trees, where they have to walk that way and walk across?
Right.
But I'm just kind of wondering if there's a car parked there that ain't supposed to be parked there? Where do the people walk when they come out to go across? Especially if it's flush.
I'm just, you're asking this question, I'm just thinking of some possibilities. We could potentially put a bollard. We could even put a bollard in that space, so a car physically couldn't go into it.
Maybe a bollard up at the top of it, so that nobody could park there, and then the pedestrians, when they walk across, they'll have an area there that'll be safe for them?
Yeah, that'd be, it would be more protected, I think.
And did you give it any thought to put the pickup window in the back of the building, and then they didn't have to exit where people come in and out of the store?
That just didn't work with the store layout. There was, we did look at it, but there was just no way to make it work. The pickup on the side is typical for what you see at most drive-throughs, and I think that's the reason, it's just hard to get the interior layout to work with the pickup on the side, or on the back.
I mean, I appreciate the buffers that you put in there, because if you didn't put them in there, people would be walking straight across there, and then with people coming out, it would be, they would be walking into traffic.
Yes.
So, I mean, I can appreciate that. And then, I guess one more question that I have is, the pickup window, is that a limited menu like the Wawa that is out there on Falls, in Falls Township on Route 13 there, or whatever they call that road now?
Yes, it is. We have one other store like this in West Hampton, New Jersey, and it is a limited menu. It's basically the same menu that's at the standalone drive-through in Falls.
Okay. That's all I have. Mr. Strauss?
The, related to Mr. Tostie's comment, the other pedestrian safety issue that was noted in the engineer's letter from TPD, from our traffic professionals, was about the five-foot gap in the median to deter pedestrians from crossing through, and I think that was supposed to be eliminated, but then I also think I still see it. Is that going to be in an updated version of these plans, or am I looking at something different? His letter says, "Provide a closure for the five-foot gap in the median adjacent drive-through. This will deter pedestrians cutting across the drive-through."
Okay, I see exactly where the break in the landscaping is.
Right. I don't know what else that could be referring to, and I see why TPD highlighted that, because that, you're almost encouraging people to hop across the lane there.
Is that discussed at the planning commission? I don't see any reason why we can't accommodate that request.
We didn't talk about it at the planning commission, but we did indicate, and I have talked to Phil previously, that we had no issue with his review comments, so we can deal with that.
So, that would be incorporated in our stipulation that you comply with all review comments?
Yes.
Good evening, this is Ron Claus, can you hear me?
Oh, good.
We can hear you, you can't see it.
Good evening, this is Ron Claus, I'm the engineer for Wawa. The break there is in the curbing to allow drainage to get out of there. So, what we agreed to do was, there's a fence in addition to the landscaping that's in that island, we would extend the fence across that curb break, so that the curb break is still there, but the fence prevents people from walking through that curb break.
That makes perfect sense to me.
Thank you.
I didn't know where he came from. I was like, I'm looking around. Corporal, did you have a question?
No, I have to answer, thank you.
Oh, okay. Is there any other board questions?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to grant amended preliminary final land development plan approval for Propco Pingood Middletown LLC for the addition of a drive-through and pickup window at the proposed Wawa food market at 639 East Lincoln Highway, SLD 18-12, with the following conditions. Applicant shall comply in full with all requirements of the Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance, unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. Any remaining review comments shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the township engineer to consider the amended plan complete.
There's a motion and a second, is there any board questions? The only question I have, the stipulation that they just agreed to, would that be incorporated in what was just done?
Yeah.
Yes, because it was already included in the review comment letters.
Okay. Any other board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? Eyes have it, 5-0.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is number seven, consideration of awarding the Sign Program Phase Two bid to Quality Services Plus of Bristol, PA at a cost of $110,500. Mr. Valla?
Good evening, board. So, as you might recall from your April meeting, the board authorized advertisement of Phase Two of the Neighborhood Sign Program. This is an extension of Phase One, which we completed in 2019. And again, to remind the board and the community, Phase One replaced all existing, most of them kind of the highway green neighborhood signs, a lot of them are in, were in Levittown, but all over the township. Phase Two would add signs at locations that were currently not signed, entrances to most of our neighborhoods in the community. There was a mandatory pre-bid meeting on May 17th. The firm that was awarded for Phase One in 2019 did not bid this time around. Phase Two would include a total of 64 signs, 50 neighborhood signs, same style as the existing, and 14 signs at our parks that are not signed yet. The lowest bid was submitted by Quality Services Plus, based in Bristol, PA, for a total of $110,500. There were a total of three bids submitted. The cost per sign submitted is comparable to Phase One, and we are projecting that that will be installed in-house by our Public Works Department by this fall, 2021. And this came in under budget, originally planned for $125,000.
Any questions for Mr. Valla?
Well, this, no, I think we had addressed this before, but the signs will look like the other signs?
Exactly. Yeah, they'll look exactly the same style, color. We are planning to improve the reflectivity a little bit, I know that was a big feedback from the last time. And then, some of the finer lettering at the top and the bottom of the signs, I know there was some feedback that was difficult to see. We are planning to work with the new vendor to improve that a little bit.
Any other questions for Mr. Valla? I'll accept the motion.
I move to award the bid Phase Two of the Neighborhood Sign Program to Quality Services Plus in the amount not to exceed $110,500.
Second. There's a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Any public questions? Mr. Post?
Thank you again, Sheldon Post, Red Rose Gate. You know, I've spoken on this subject a couple of times previously. I think you all know that I'm a fan of these signs. It is concerning to me, though, that one of the primary purposes, in my belief, when you started Phase One, was to create uniformity in the township, instead of having a variety of signs around. And yet, here we are, already making some minor changes as we go to Phase Two. The reflective lettering is outstanding idea. I wish it would have been considered with Phase One, because those signs are very difficult to see in the evening as you're driving by, you know, unlike our street signs, which reflect everything, and you can easily see street names. My question is, and I suppose this is probably a lost cause, it's either impossible or economically unfeasible. Is there any way that perhaps the Phase One signs are able to be retrofitted with reflective lettering in any way? I don't know if that's even a shot in the dark, no pun intended, or whatever.
Mr. Valla looks anxious to answer that question.
Well, it's good to see you. I know we've corresponded often over the last couple of years, so it's good to see you in person. The Phase One signs do have reflectivity. It's not something you typically see of a sign of that style, and it's kind of a micro glass beading that's only in the lettering. We are planning to work with the new vendor to make sure that that's more visible on the whole face of the sign. But the old signs were reflective, but we're hoping to beef that up a little bit. But really, the whole point, especially with the tweaking on the lettering, the average person isn't really going to notice a significant difference, the overall look, color, size of the sign, all of the basic identifiers are going to remain the same, it's just those minor improvements.
And, if I may, I apologize for this, but since I had this, and it was, had to wait till now, I had notes at the end of it that I wanted to say earlier, so if I can squeeze this in. I do want to just commend and thank the board, the township employees, our police department for doing just a tremendous job, at least in this residence's opinion, over the last 15 months, through some very trying situations. You've kept us informed, you've kept meetings running, our police department is excellent and has done an outstanding job throughout. So, I just publicly, on behalf of myself and my wife, wanted to let you know, at least two township residents truly appreciate what has been done around here for the last 15 months. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Post. And I will say, our staff here in the township, our police department, is top-notch, and I say that a lot, so it's really good hearing it from the residents. Any other public comments? Seeing a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, 5-0. Number eight, consideration of authorizing Phase Two of the municipal building generator project for a cost not to exceed $90,000. Ms. Burkus?
Good evening, members of the board. As you heard, we're here to ask the board to consider authorizing going forward with the Phase Two generator project. Last year, we installed the new generator for this building that supplies emergency power. When we had the generator installed, we ran a load test, and we found out that the generator is only carrying 10% load of work that it gets from this building, what circuits are tied into it. The previous generator that came with the building originally had a fire, had to have the engine replaced, and never put out good power. There were constant issues with the generator. We now believe it's this low-load issue that caused the problem with the original generator. There are only a few circuits in the police department that are currently on the generator, and the township manager's office is on the generator. Everything else in this building goes black and does not operate. So, we are proposing to move circuits over to this new generator. The new generator can handle almost every circuit in this building, with the exception of the new chillers. And Tangible Consulting, the electrical engineer consulting firm that's working with us on this, has been working with building and zoning with the new chillers and Burns Mechanical to see that they put a transfer switch in an outlet with the chiller, that should we be on an extended power outage during the hot season? We would be able to rent an external generator that would power the chillers, while the permanent generator would handle everything else, including the air handlers, the computers, the swipe access system, all the outlets in the building, and would truly make this building operational, would keep productivity going in the building, and we would also have the benefit of being able to open this public hall and other public areas of this building to the public as a respite and a place to charge things, a place to come in out of either the heat or the cold, and it would be a great benefit to the community. The memo that is in your packet is quite detailed, I'm going to stay brief at this point, saying that Tangible Consulting will handle the system design, the consulting fees and support during the construction phase. They, I've quoted a price of $45,700. Tangible is the electrical consultant this township uses for most of its projects. They did do the generator here, the generator at the Public Works Building, and have been involved in many other projects for the township, and they are a local firm. There are three major parts that we need to purchase, along with some conduit cabling, copper wire, and we expect that to come in at around $44,300. However, prices are changing almost daily at this point, so we're hoping to do some real creative shopping and stay within this budget. Our Public Works Department will be doing the labor, except for the final tie-in, where we will get a certified electrician to make sure that all the circuits are correct, and that the high-voltage tie-in is done by a certified professional. So, the total project cost is coming in at $90,000. We do have $95,000 budgeted in this, for this project, in the 2021 budget. And again, we'd like to start as soon as possible to avoid any more price increases, and I believe that this will be a great benefit to this community, to this building, with running the air handlers and things, it'll keep ventilation going in the building, which keeps it safe, too, when other things aren't running. Are there any other questions?
I, for one, I think it's a great idea that we were able to light up everything if the generator comes on, in particular, our police department and the rest of the building.
Very importantly, the police department. They're here 24/7, and they need to have the support of a building that works.
Absolutely. And I also appreciate our Public Works Department being able to handle the labor in it to keep the costs down. So, I would move to authorize Phase Two generator project in the amount of $90,000.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any board questions? Any public questions? Mr. Warren?
Don't go away, I need you.
She likes to hear that, by the way.
I was trying to keep track, and it seemed to me, you came up with 90, 89, very, very close to $90,000. Why wouldn't you all just, if it's $95,000 in the budget, not that you couldn't make it, but why not just make it not to exceed $95,000? If you come in at your $89,000, fine, but rather than if it comes in at 92, as I thought could possibly happen, then you'd all have to come back and vote again, and if it's in the budget, just make life easier on this woman. Make it $95,000 if it's there already.
We try to make it real easy on her, and she is very good with the pricing. I don't ever recall her coming back, so if she has to come back, she can come back to a friendly board to get this done.
And it's, thank you, Mr. Warren, but again, if we need to go to $95,000, that is within 5%.
Correct.
And I believe that we can handle that, but the 5% is kind of there because of the nature of the pricing right now.
Any other public comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is consideration of authorizing purchase of a dump truck with a cab and chassis from the Bucks County International of Langhorn, PA, and body with plow and accessories from HA Dearheart &amp; Son of Thoroughfare, New Jersey, at a total cost of $173,000, or $173.21. Mr. Gartman?
Good evening. Once again, this was in...
Once again, this was in the budget. We did budget it this, for this coming year. With the help from RDA, the actual RDA amount that we got is covering approximately 85% of that vehicle. So, you know, thanks to RDA to help us out with that. So this truck will be replaced in, an '06 International, which is time to be replaced. We can't get parts for it. It's an old state truck, actually, that we got back in '05, actually it was. So that's what we're asking to replace this vehicle with, you know, for your...
Any questions for Mr. Gartmyer? I'll accept the motion.
I move to authorize the purchase of one 2021 HV507 SFA Dump Truck Cabin Chassis from Bucks County International of Langhorn in the amount of $93,937, $937. One galleon steel dump body, one plow, one spreader from H.A. Dearheart and Son of Thoroughfare, New Jersey, in the amount of $79,084, for a total of $173,021.
I'll second.
Seeing a motion and a second, is there any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Next on the agenda is consideration of authorizing purchase of X-Mark mower from Star Lawn Mower of Jamison, PA, at a cost of $32,634. Mr. Gartmyer.
So, once again, this was in the budget. I believe we budgeted $40,000 for this piece of equipment. It came in a little bit cheaper. We did shop around by using Co-Stars once again, and we got a cheaper price. It's to replace a zero turn, but it's not just a zero turn. It actually cuts eight foot at a time. So it's a double-wing mower, actually, is what it is. We're trying to change a little bit what we do by cutting, and this piece of equipment will help us by doing that. It gives you a bigger cut, less time cutting an area. It cuts up to 10 acres an hour at the right speed. So it's something that we looked into probably about three years ago, did some research on it, and, you know, we put it in the budget last year.
Any questions for Mr. Gartmyer?
Does this require any specialized training for our crews to be able to operate, or are they all ready to...
No, it's, it's almost like your regular zero turn, but the wings fold out on each side. So it gives you, basically, it's giving you two zero-turn cuts at one time. So you're doing eight-foot swipe at one time, instead of a five-foot swipe.
So I know you can't promise this, but this sounds like it's going to almost cut our mowing time in half when you're able to use that eight, that full eight-foot diameter?
It should cut it down. I mean, you still need the other zero turns for places where that can't get, but at the parks and that, it's going to cut down. We actually use the, our farm-type tractor now. It leaves ruts and stuff, so we don't, it gives it a nice finish look also. That's what we're trying to get to.
Any other questions? I will accept the motion.
Move to authorize the purchase of one X-Mark 96-inch, 37-horsepower mower from Star Lawn Mower, Inc., Jamison, Pennsylvania, for a total of $32,634.
I'll second.
Seeing a motion and a second, is there any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gartmyer. Next on the agenda is consideration of awarding a contract to K.E. Seifert of Langhorn in the amount of $11,025 for the replacement of the municipal building hot water heater. Mr. Anis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, our hot water heater is original to the building. It's about 20 years old. It's been leaking and rusting out. So we got three bids for replacement. The work will be done by Seifert Plumbing, and all the demolition and disconnections will be done by our Public Works Department to help us save some money on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Anis. Any questions for Mr. Anis? I'll move to award a contract to K.E. Seifert of Langhorn in the amount of $11,025 for the replacement of the municipal building hot water heater.
I'll second.
Seeing a motion and a second, is there any questions from the board? Any public questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Anis. Consideration of rejecting all bids for the Community Park Barn Roof Project. Mr. Capar.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is the second time we put the bid out for the asphalt shingle at the barn. On the second request, the responsible contractor ordinance was not met by Holton Contracting. Therefore, I am asking to reject this second bid that was put out. My next steps are really nothing until I talk with the solicitor to see what we could do about getting some relief to try and get this done. I would say this is a critical repair, but it's not an urgent repair at this moment. So it does have to get done soon, but not right away. So for that reason, I am asking that we reject this bid, and then we just kind of stay, you know, stay pat till we can figure out a remediation level to put it out and bid it successfully.
And I'll work with you a little bit closer on this, too, for moving forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. So I move to reject the bid to replace the asphalt single roof and gutters on the barn building at Middletown Community Park. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seeing a motion and a second, is there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capar. Next on the agenda is consideration of rejecting all bids for the cleaning bid and authorizing release of the bid. Ms. Tealie Coles.
No, actually...
Oh, Ms. Burkes.
She was generous enough to write the memo for me while I was on vacation this last week and two. So, but if, as you recall, I was here in April and requested that the board authorize the release of a RFP for cleaning services for the municipal center and the Public Works Building. We had a bid opening on May 11th. We did receive three bids. The range of price from low to high was $29,640 to $52,000. One of the bids was received incomplete and therefore was disqualified. So we basically had two bids to thoroughly review. Based upon the review, we believe that the pricing does not adequately cover the amount of work that is needed to happen for the services that did submit the bids. So we would like to have the board reject the bids that were received on May 11th. We'd like to restructure the RFP and reissue it. And hopefully, we will, we will get a few more bids, and we'll get an all-encompassing bid that will take care of the tasks that need to be done here at the municipal center and the Public Works Building.
So when we restructure the bid, we will be more specific on what we're looking for? Is that where, is that where you're referencing?
Correct, correct.
All right, is there any other questions for Ms. Burkes?
My question is, I actually still think this might be a blessing in disguise to have had these come back with such a wide range and sort of be confusing. We've learned so much about what we need to do for terms of cleaning protocols between March, when you probably started preparing this, and now. And I asked when this went up the first time, are you sure we haven't, you know, changed the level of sanitation that needs to be done, given what we're learning about the way COVID-19 is transmitted? So I hope that as you restructure this bid, we can make sure we're taking into account the latest science on what actually needs to be done in terms of sanitizing, to definitely make sure this is safe for employees and visitors, but we're not going overboard to where it's ready for surgery at all times.
You're exactly right. And I feel that even these, where these companies were concerned, I think they were looking at it as a regular cleaning bid. And we have a police department that basically lives in this building 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and their needs are much more important or much more duplicated. I mean, they, they generate more waste, they, they use the facilities more. More people are in and out of the building because of that, and that requires careful consideration by a company that, that comes in and looks at what tasks are required here. And I, and I think perhaps it was not taken into consideration by the, by the way the bids came back. So we would like to do it again, and we'd like to do it better.
Look, I appreciate us trying again, to be honest. We, we want to get it right. So I will move to reject all bids for the cleaning services for the municipal center and Public Works Building and authorize rebidding.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burkes. Moving on, update on the US-1 project. Ms. Tealie Coles.
Good evening. Tonight, I wanted to give the Board of Supervisors, as well as the public, a brief update on the US-1 improvement project. PennDOT made live last week a section of their website that is dedicated to this Phase Three project. Phase Three is in the design stage, and they're basically analyzing various alternatives and seeking public input at this point. This first slide, let's see if it's going to... There we go. The first slide shows you in green, that's Phase One, down by the Turnpike Interchange. Then Phase Two, what they have as RC Two, that's the Rock Hill Drive, Nishamani Interchange, Business Route One Interchange. Anyone who travels through here is experiencing the changes that are happening right now. What we're talking about now and what impacts Middletown most specifically is RC Three, or Phase Three. So you see a close-up on this slide. It basically extends from, I'm just going to say from the left side of the slide, which is the US-1 bridge over Business Route One, and it goes all the way toward the right here to the interchange with Maple Avenue. In general, what you see out there currently, as we all know, are two lanes in both directions with no shoulder, with a 14-foot concrete median, and then what PennDOT refers to as frontage roads. We typically call them the access roads here. They're township-owned roads. What is being proposed moving forward, and I don't have a slide for this, but I am going to have the website at the end of this and encourage everyone who is watching to go to the website and watch the presentation, and again, provide feedback. But the proposal is to move to, to a very standard concrete barrier down the center. There will be two lanes in each direction with a full-shoulder lane, removal of the concrete islands, and then, and another barrier. And so there's lots that is going to happen to these frontage roads during this design process. You can't really see it on this slide, but you will notice as I go through the presentation that, you know, you're, we're going to go from these various sort of small on-ramps. You know, one of the reasons the roadway is so unsafe is because of the, you know, the limited acceleration time to get onto the roadway. Another one of the safety concerns is that there is currently no shoulder. You know, there are high-speed accidents, no ability to pull off on the shoulder. And so this is going to have two primary interchanges. One, which I'll show you next, is near the high school, and another that is down here closer to Maple Avenue. So I'll just go to the next slide. So this build alternative, as I mentioned, has paved shoulders, concrete barriers, the islands are removed. What you see at the top here is a tie-in to Old Lincoln Highway. These are currently depicted as roundabouts, but that is not, it is not final design. That is, you know, like, everything that we're seeing right now could change throughout the design process. But as you can see, you would have an on and off ramp. The southbound tie-in on the top there, the northbound tie-in at Highland Avenue. So that's what you're going to see at this end. As you get to the other end, you'll see here, we have it listed as Alternative One, and this is a partial cloverleaf at Route One and 413. It includes significant work. It's about $80 million. There are all sorts of, there's all sorts of impact. We've started to get phone calls at the township building about this, and what PennDOT has directed us is that this is, this is the design phase. And so although some people may think that there is going to be a taking or not going to be a taking, we're encouraging folks to wait until final design to provide feedback. One alternative, what they have listed as Alternative Two, is this diverging diamond pattern. This is a higher impact and much more costly. That's why Alternative One is what you are seeing in all of the, you know, in all of the documents. In terms of the timing, again, they're in preliminary engineering now through the end of 2021. They'll move to final design and right-of-way access in early 2022, and that is an 18-to-24-month process. And they're looking at construction in October of 2026. So I think most importantly, there will be many opportunities for folks to provide feedback. There'll be lots of public meetings. I'm going to show you on this last slide, this website. So US1Bucks.com is the project website. And if you go to the section RC Three portion, there's actually a video, there is a form to be filled out to provide feedback. The one final thing that I just want to mention to the board is there will be a decision to be made by the Board of Supervisors about the frontage roads and the access roads. There will be portions that will need to remain open where there are driveways, but there are large portions that will not be necessary. There's some discussion about utilizing them in some type of a multi-use trail manner. So I, I have asked Parks and Rec to sit down and, you know, sort of take a look at the preliminary design, see how that might fit into our trail system. The problem is they sort of, they're off and they're on, and they're off and they're on. But, but just to let you know that, that's going to be a decision point. Both Dawn and I sat through a presentation, a webinar presentation, a few weeks ago, and they were very clear that they were going to be seeking township input on that. So that's all I have. Again, just sort of trying to drive everyone to the website where you can provide some feedback, and we will link that on our website. And as we get more information from PennDOT, we will continue to push that out to the residents. Any questions?
Thanks, Ms. Tealie Coles. I wanted her to do a little presentation so that the residents could get the feedback. Because if you go to that website, you have until July 2nd to give them feedback on this project. We wanted to make sure that the residents knew this was coming and something that they could have feedback on and have input if need be. This is a PennDOT project, just so everybody knows, it's not a township project. So if you do want to give the feedback, please do so. One of the things me and Ms. Tealie Coles were talking about with the access road is maybe making them like bike lanes, doing something like that along there. But we would have to be coordinating that with Langhorn Manor, because part of them, part of that road goes through Langhorn Manor. So it's something we're still a couple of years away from, but it is something that is coming, and the residents need to know about it before they're coming. So we want to keep you informed.
Could we have a link on our website, on our website and our Facebook pages, maybe?
I'm not sure about Facebook, but I know we have a link on our homepage.
On our website already.
Yep. If they wanted to just link, go onto our website and then link it, and then you, it'll lead you to that link there. Is there any other questions from the board on that project for Ms. Tealie Coles? Any public, any questions on that project? Any public, any questions on that project?
I'm a resident here in Langhorn. In the alternate one, I did see, in the plan, I did see my home being impacted.
Can, can you just get a little closer to the mic, please?
Hi. I live in Langhorn Manor, and in the alternate one plan, I did see my home being impacted. So what would be the plan to let the residents know? Because I've been living there for so long now.
From my understanding is that as PennDOT moves toward final design, that if you are an impacted property, they will be reaching out to you.
So do you have any idea of how much time that would be once, from the time they let the residents know? Because if they go, if you have to move out of the property, you need enough time to even make the decision of what to do and how you're going to do it.
If you wanted to leave me your name and contact information, I could try to get you in touch with someone at PennDOT.
Okay.
I'd be happy to do that.
Sure, I'll do.
Okay.
Did you receive one of the letters from PennDOT that they sent out?
I just got the mail, I got a letter on Saturday.
Oh, okay, because they...
It was just saying that this video was going live on June 8th. That's all I have. I haven't received anything else.
Because from my understanding, PennDOT sent out letters to residents that could be possibly impacted by this project, and I, I've seen a couple of them, but it's only, there's nothing etched in stone, but there is something that went out to the residents who possibly could be impacted.
Right. I saw my home in the video, so...
Okay.
Did you see the video?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it does show you.
Yep.
I, I'm happy to give you the contact information.
Sure, I'll show information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just to alleviate the previous woman's, her, no home. I heard 2026 is a likely construction time, which means maybe 2036. I'm only kidding, but not by much.
Mr. Warren, you worked for PennDOT. Now, is that, is that any way to talk about that place?
It's gone to hell in a handbasket the last 15 years.
Okay.
But you will be definitely getting a lot of notice, and nothing will happen in the next near two or three years that will impact your home, but you'll get plenty of notice. And if not, he said it, not me.
I was going to say, you did not hear that from this board, you heard that from him? But they will notify you if something was going to impact you. And like I said, I've seen letters already from the, the DE at District 6 in PennDOT that went out to the residents, so, all right? All right, moving on to number 15, consideration of accepting the resignation of Kiran Hastings from the zoning board, zoning hearing board. We received a letter of resignation from him, and I would make a motion to accept his resignation. A second? There's a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Number 16, consideration of appointing Kevin Strauss to the Township Zoning Hearing Board. I will make a motion to appoint Kevin Strauss to the Township Zoning Board.
I'll second.
Seeing a motion and a second, is there any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Abstain?
Opposed? Ayes have it, 4-0 with one abstention. Number 17, consideration of appointing Javon Smith to the Human Relations Commissions. Is there a motion to appoint Javon Smith?
I'll make a motion to appoint Javon Smith to the Human Relations Commission.
I'll second.
Seeing a motion and a second, is there any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. All right, moving on to other business. Mr. Kessler.
Yeah? We do have a set of plans for signature tonight, so if I may ask three of you to sign at the end here. Other than that, nothing further. Thank you.
Mr. Esposito.
Yes, I just wanted to announce that the board held an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss some ongoing litigation matters, and just like Mr. Kessler, I have a couple documents for Ms. Corporal and Mr. Tossi to sign as well.
Thank you, Mr. Esposito. Ms. Tealie Coles.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Kezak.
Nothing further, thanks.
Ms. Payne.
I actually do have one quick thing. I didn't know if anybody could give an update, Ms. Tealie Coles, maybe on what is going on with the mall situation and the trucks that are continuing to park there?
Sure, so we have, as you know, received some complaints. It's been raised at a meeting. Both Pat Ennis and I have reached out to the mall to talk to them. They have a number of leases in place for leasing the parking lot. Unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do about that. It is a permitted use. They have basically explained that due to COVID, they're obviously trying to bring in revenue however they can. They did, however, agree to move the trucks to one section of the parking lot rather than having them all the way around the ring road, and they are in the process of doing that right now. They've also said that as soon as the tenancy in the mall and the foot traffic in the mall picks up, that would be something that they would, you know, no longer want to do. Obviously, when the apartments, when the ground is broken on the apartments, that's also going to deter those trucks from wanting to use that area, so we're working on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Corporal.
Nothing.
Ms. Strauss.
I had one thing, noting that our next meeting is not until after Independence Day. Just a reminder, and Chief or Captain Feeney, correct me if I'm wrong, there's practically no place in Middletown Township where you can legally discharge any fireworks. So this comes up every time we celebrate our nation's wonderful birth. Please, you can buy them, but you can't explode them inside Middletown Township literally anywhere. So please, guys, keep the fireworks under wraps, keep the dogs and babies sleeping. Thank you, and a happy 4th of July, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I was going to mention that, so I'm glad you did. I do want to let everyone know that Foxwood Manor will be holding a vaccination site on July 1st from 5:00 to 7:00. We're encouraging our residents there and the apartments to go there and get vaccinated. Actually, we're encouraging all residents to get vaccinated. Let's get back to normal. I mean, we're, we're starting to get back, and the more people we get vaccinated, the better off we are. I'd also like to thank our staff. We have gotten a AAA bond rating for the second year in a row, which is saving our taxpayers almost $300,000 with our debt refinancing. So our staff has done a great job in, in keeping us there at the AAA bond rating, and I would like to just thank you for the work that you do. And then lastly, I would like to congratulate all the graduates this year. I know Nishamani High School will be graduating tomorrow, and there's other schools that fall within our township that have graduated or are graduating, so I'd like to congratulate all the graduates moving forward this year. This had to be one heck of a year with the pandemic all year long and the struggles that the kids endured. And then I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Tealie Coles on Sam, who also graduated the other night. So it's been a heck of a year. We're getting through it and looking forward to continuing to move forward. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? We're adjourned.